First, I'd like to move that we come out of executive session in an integrated order. And second, that will... In all favor? Could we all stand for such a legal statement?
Let's read this to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens, one nation and one God, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
What would you like to do with the consent of the... I think we approve it. Second? In all favor? The next upcoming select board meeting is Thursday, September 2nd, by 3:00. Select board comments and announcements. Let's start with business item number one. Consider action authorizing the town attorney and code enforcement officer to take any and all action necessary and appropriate to enforce the Town of West Bath zoning ordinance with respect to the shoreline zoning violations. I'm partly owned by Jessica Walker, Tax Matic R-04, Law 12-3, and I'm partly owned by John Stadler and David from Hillbilly, Minnesota, Tifanla, Pentonburg, Tax Matic R-04, Law 12-5 and 12-6, all located within the Sea Kiss Point subdivision, including the delta mutation, negotiating, negotiating a consent agreement for the filing of suit in state court. So who... Second? In favor? Is there any discussion? Any question?
What's the issue?
What's the issue?
So this is, this is for the subdivision concerns we've had of the Sea Kiss subdivision, and we've had communication with the town attorney and the code enforcement officer. And at this point, we are providing, granting them the opportunity to collaborate with the property owners and speak on the town's behalf through our town attorney and code enforcement officer.
Could you define concern?
John, you want?
Define concern?
Well, you said for concerns that you've had. What are the concerns?
This was from the meeting last week. They all came to the meeting talking about the cutting of trees, violations to some ordinances, and we've transferred the information to our town attorney, who's going to work with it on that behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Our goal is to resolve the planting issues on behalf of the town and the community, first and foremost, and have it returned to its natural state.
Could you say your name, please?
Sure, my name's Brenda. So just, just to try to understand, I was here at the last meeting where you approved the motion to impose fines, intended to encourage this to happen. Is that still moving forward, or have you changed? I guess I'm curious about the meaning of authorizing the attorney to work with. Could you just explain in plain language what happened?
The upshot of it is, is that we got a little bit before ourselves that we are not legally authorized to impose fines. What we can do is what we just did, which was authorize the town attorney and the code enforcement officer to take further action, or to first try to reach an agreement, or to take legal action.
The goal is to reach an agreement in a new fashion, to have it planted this planting season and have it completed with a track, a record showing over the next five years that the trees are still viable, and manage a whole process set forth. But it's really at the best interest for our attorney, our town attorney, and the code enforcement officer to work with the individuals. And should it have to go down a further legal path, it'll be decided at that time. Can you state your name?
Rebecca Goldfein. Didn't that thought that the violation that you issued to the landowners, they give, give some entity the authority to impose fines? And it, because there was, I mean, if, which entity cannot impose fines if not the town?
The court. Just the court.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Are these all set on? No. Not everybody knows who Sally is.
Good evening, Sally Daggan, I'm the town attorney, and I'm pleased to work with John, and we think we can work towards a resolution. Hopefully the property owners will be cooperative, if they're not, then we've been authorized to go to court. So, um, some people, once they figure out what's ahead of them, uh, they come to the table a little quicker than they might have, um, but once they know that John and I, and with the full backing of the sec board, are mean business, hopefully they'll come to the table and work with us. The main DEP is also involved in this matter, so I think between the town and the DEP, I think we can hopefully reach some agreement with the property owners. If not, then, you know, we can see them in court.
Yes, one more question. So given the, you know, one thing that you discussed at length in the last meeting is the contempt that this property owner has shown, not just for his neighbors and for the trees and the natural resources of the town, but also for John and for the board itself. Are we going to, you know, are you planning to use all the tools available to get this landowner to act as swiftly as possible, as thoroughly as possible? I'll just give one example. I know I was personally quite surprised to see a building start to go up on this land, even though John has known for a long time that there's been illegal clearing on this land. So for example, are we right to presume that there'll be no more building permits offered on any of these lots until this tree business is taken care of? Is there any possibility of revoking or pausing the current building permit until this is taken care of? You know, I just, I've been impressed and amazed by this landowner's willingness to lie about things, to put things off, to ignore the law, to show contempt for this body. You know, it seems like the full court press, it might be time for that. Is that something you've discussed, or something you're willing to do, or something that the town should discuss?
John and I will work with the property owners to start with, and I've done lots of these shoreland zoning violations, and we're not going to negotiate this process publicly. It's between the town and the landowners, and ultimately, any agreement that is reached will be made public. But it's, this isn't a process where the public provides input on how to solve these shoreland zoning violations. It's the town and the DEP, and we're going to try and work with the landowners. And that's, as much as we're going to talk about tonight is, we're not going to talk about what strategies we're going to use. We just hope that the property owners will cooperate and get some replanning done this replating season. The longer the process is drawn out, the more likely it is that it's going to be that much more expensive for them, so.
Yes, sir.
Mike Montgomery. So the answer is, to his question, no, you won't stop work on the current building permit?
We're not going to negotiate in public what we will or will not consider for options with the property owners.
So today's truth is, you have not, and you do not plan to issue a stop?
I did not say that. I said, "We're not going to negotiate the process in public." It's between the town and the property owners. What we, what tools we use is again, between the town and the property owners. It's not for the public to tell us what to do or not to do.
So they're in violation, so you may do something, or you may not do something? I'm just trying to understand.
The, the town attorney and the code enforcement officer will take any and all action necessary and appropriate to enforce the Town of West Bath zoning ordinance with respect to the shoreline zoning violations on those properties. And that's as much as we are free to say at this point.
That's great.
So any and all. And I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Duff, that the disrespect is awesome and overwhelming, but disrespect is not usually kind of enforceable, and of course, in a court of law, I think. However, if this person does continue to show contempt for the ordinance and doesn't get stuff done in time for planting this fall, then the possibility of fines increase. And we have been told that in such cases as shoreline zoning, that very often, the person who's in violation, once the violation has been legally established, pays attorney's fees as well as has to continue to work on mitigating the problem that they've created. So that's kind of the only way that contempt can be stopped.
Okay, thank you.
The ultimate goal is to have it completed, back to its state, and, and by this planting season. And then everyone is happy at that point. And that's really the best, for the best of the community.
So going forward, Sally and John will take the lead on this, and... And, and the public will be given updates when it is appropriate.
But thank you for your concerns. We hear them.
And, sure. Number two on our agenda is 51 Campbell's Pond Road alleged code violations. Scott Funston will attend the meeting to discuss ongoing concerns with activity at 51 Campbell's Pond Road.
Yes, thank you. I was curious what the updates were that were, John? Did you, we spoke the last, kind of the updates on Bureau of Motor Vehicles? Did you get a chance to speak with that Ron McGowan gentleman?
Jana tried to involve him, and he never reached back out to either one of us. So I have an update on the property. I've been on the property. As of now, there is one, one vehicle in violation of the ordinance, and either needs to be registered or removed from the property. I have pictures. I was there, I was actually just there yesterday to make sure that the information I had for today is current, is, is possible.
So there's one vehicle up there now? What happened to all the other vehicles there? Did you speak to them prior to that?
Yeah, they removed them. I told them, you know, I'm going to be coming down there, and going to be taking a look around at some stuff.
Okay, good. Good. I didn't know they were down there, because we haven't gone around it.
Something happened. I also addressed the dirt bike track. I, I looked at all of that. There's a, as you know, you're probably familiar, there's, there's quite a ridge behind that property, and it gets a lot of runoff. So water runs off of that and comes down at the backside of her yard, and then down over the aisles, through the cow bedding into the pond. There's nothing anybody's got to do about that. But the disturbance on the ground from where the dirt bikes have kind of gone over on that edge, I've asked them to put some sort of erosion control, whether it be silk fence or erosion control mix along that edge, and, you know, to stop those soils from entering the, the rain runoff as it passes through. I'm going to be doing a follow-up with them in 30 days to see that both of those things are done.
Okay, terrific. Well, that's good to know they've done something.
What was the 30-day mark? Was your calendar there for that deal?
Uh, it's 30 days from yesterday.
Thank you.
So with, back with the Bureau of Motor Vehicle though, can we reach, print maps, reach out to those guys again? Because that ruling for that recycling license probably will apply to some of these other places around town, might help clean them up, because they fit all over graveyard. Do you agree? Other places fit that description?
Yep, there's, there's some other places I would agree that would probably fit that description. As far as motor vehicle...
Yeah, well, I, I understand.
He, he didn't have any interest. We can certainly, Jana was very easy to deal with.
She sure was.
Yep.
Well, perhaps we can learn the rule ourself then, the Bureau of Motor Vehicle ruling on that, and I'll start applying that.
Yes, she had, she had reached out to him, like I said, for both of us, and we didn't hear back. I had reached out, left him a message over the phone, but he is somebody I would definitely like to talk to.
Yeah, oh yeah. No, I think we can learn lives, and I think that rule will help a lot around town, clean up some of those other messes that are around. All right, well, thanks for that, Jonathan.
Sure.
So that lends me to ask a question from that.
Can I say your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Mary Lee Wilson. And so, learning what we're learning through this process, do citizens need to send letters to the town requesting that properties that may fall under this rule? Or does the town, based on information they've received in the past from citizens, will maybe looking at some of these properties? Do we need to promulgate that, citizens? Or what's the best way to know that something will be looked at in light of what you've found?
I suppose you could, you could send a request in writing, an email, or...
So, you know... We also need to have everybody understand that complaints are frequent, and John can only handle things, he's one guy, and, and we have, we and he have the discretion to decide which cases need to be acted on, and, and when. That simply a complaint, an expression of concern does not mean that John is going to be looking at that next week, next week. That things take time, and he has a, he has a 40-hour work week, not a 140-hour work week. So those things have to be taken care of in terms of urgency.
Do you have the motor vehicle ruling available? So maybe we can post that, so you guys can understand what that is, help further your understanding, so that, so if you have a concern, you can understand what the process is, that we're going to try and attempt on other properties now that we have more information on how to do that.
That would be helpful. Another question?
One behind you, and then, and then go. Go ahead.
Mine was quick, and I'm just curious, what is, what is the rule we're talking about? It's always so vague. Is this like abandoned vehicles on property?
There's something that we just learned of this, I just learned of this evening, the motor, the Bureau of Motor Vehicle ruling. And so we're going to look into that and better understand it. We can post that for other people to understand it as well. I, I don't, I don't know anything about it to comment, but I'd like to learn about it.
We're looking at...
Is this, are we just talking about the state statute?
I don't...
Auto graveyard and dirt yards?
So there's a motor vehicle? There's a motor vehicle?
There's a whole bunch of junkyards around town.
Hold on one second. Mary Lee, what was the motor vehicle?
The Bureau of Motor Vehicle has made a new ruling that you have to have a recycler permit for these gentlemen to take cars apart, put them back together, and send them on the road. They cannot longer do that without the proper permits, recycling permits.
So that's something recent, like...
It is, it is.
Like jobs or something?
We just, I just learned it from the lady from the EPA. It's a fairly good thing, and I guess other towns around the state are using it to clean up messes.
So that's something that, again, we'll post, that we can further understand it?
Sure, sure.
And then what was your comment? I don't know, so I don't want to comment on it. It sounds like it may be a solution, but I...
Well, it'll be helpful to say that.
It's, it's, thank you for finding it.
Kathy Funston?
John with the night, has a question?
Yes.
So I know you're going to go back in 30 days to 51. Will you continue to check them occasionally?
Yeah, I will.
As a rule? We just know as in the past that they behave for maybe two weeks, and then we start up again, so would that be ongoing thing?
I'll keep an eye on it, and they, you know, I didn't get any resistance on the property when I arrived. They were cooperative with me, so I'm hoping that it goes smoothly in the future.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Sometimes education, you know, is the first step.
And a new goal.
I brought that up, you know? It's being brought to property owners.
Absolutely. It's a great opportunity, something that's recently enacted that could be beneficial.
Number three. Article number three, noise ordinance discussion. A technical assistance bulletin prepared by the state domain is included for information. It was written in 2000. Bulletin provides helpful direction concerning policy and strategy in reducing the impact of noise, its effect on quality life and property values. The town might consider incorporated language into the land use to ensure development review ordinances. Regulation regarding noise should also be considered as part of the comprehensive planning process.
We didn't put this in the packet out there for other people to stay?
The packet is online, if anyone wants to review it. It's on the calendar, under the select board meeting.
One of the things we said we'd do as a select board is take a look at the noise, and maybe try and develop a noise ordinance for the Town of West Bath.
Or if not, a standalone noise ordinance to incorporate it into our site development ordinance, possibly land use ordinance, and also in our comprehensive plan.
It's a lot, but fascinating reading.
And I think John, they want to speak on this.
It's really fascinating reading, just going through this first couple of pages, the things that really, you know, one of the things I was looking at, you know, noise level, human perception, not usually noticeable, just noticeable, highly noticeable, twice as loud, four times as loud. Okay.
But, and part of it is, it needs to be something that is easily measurable from our staff, which is a piece that we have to find a way to do, because what someone may seem noisy to them may not be. And so it has to be a measurable element to be justified.
And, and they recommend what common instrument is to be used for towns to do that. There's some interesting comparisons to what, what you would, what you would compare to household ordinary kinds of noises. A vacuum cleaner at 10 feet has decimal of 70, which means they ought to do something about vacuum cleaners.
Or not vacuum anymore.
But that's my suggestion. And the whole thing about, you know, times, that noise can be, a lot of these, a lot of towns use 7:00 AM, and I could tell you, here in West Bath, it's enough 7:00 AM for sure.
Do you have something to say? Yeah, you raise your hand? No noise?
You're snoring, stop that.
What's the allowable decimal level for boosters?
Ask the chickens.
You had a question?
I was just curious if the ordinance will sort of be looking only at noise, the noise levels, or looking at specific activities that produce noise, like tannery?
Like what?
Like tannery, or construction, or...
Well, part of it is a time element?
Yeah.
That's something that we can control. I'm not sure you can control how people are making the noise.
Of it.
Or a product that's used to make a noise.
Although tannery might be a good discussion with a local law enforcement agency. I think in some, I don't even know, I think at certain levels are illegal, so we might want to, we might have to check that out and see what's legal and what's not legal. At one time, I knew it was all illegal, but I think some of that's changed now, so...
Yeah, you can buy tannery at Dick's Ford Boots.
Yeah.
I think tannery would be like well off the scale for a level noise, so, so I'd be ready, because it's just so loud.
But right now, we, we don't have stipulation for that, so we're working on establishing what that would be.
Okay. And then, this is when the town was holding on that the timing?
Yes, or we can't do an ordinance without that approval.
So that's less spring.
And it would get really, it'd be for everybody to take a look at this, because it really gets into that legal mungo jungle of, you know, one of the standards is if the daytime and or nighttime, pre-development, ambivalent sound environment exceeds the daytime or nighttime limits in subsection 2A or 2... I mean, it really goes into, do we really want something that complicated, or can it be pretty simple and easy to start with, to get something on board?
Yeah, we need to be something that the Sagahaw County Sheriff would agree to enforce, since we don't have our own enforcement here in the Town of West Bath.
So the Sagh... Okay, go ahead.
Paul Coons. So actually, probably the most enforceable part of an ordinance would be time limits, you know?
That is not...
Before, before a sentence, such a time...
It doesn't require a measurement of it, so that's a standard you could set, but if you, if you get into loudness levels...
Yeah.
That's something that you then have to find a way to measure what that is.
True, but if you have a limit early in the morning, and then a certain time at night, you know, if you have anecdotal evidence from, say, two or three neighbors, even though you don't have exact...
It needs to be a standard that everyone can follow.
Yeah.
That you can't segment out a piece of the community.
The, the problem, the problem is going to be establishing this is what, at what level of noise becomes a nuisance.
Right.
And your nuisance maybe might haunt. So that's, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's going to be as simple that we can whip this thing together for next day, for, for the next town meeting, but, because when you start looking at this stuff, it's fairly complicated. And to have an ordinance that's actually enforceable is going to be another whole catalog of fish.
Maybe there's another similar community, you know, Sagahaw, that we can model against, you know? On our side. Very few towns have standalone noise ordinances. When I've been doing some research, I find that some, particularly the larger cities incorporate it within their land use ordinances.
But we...
And they also put, they may put a line on their building permit applications, for example, that says the contractor agrees to work within specific hours, or something like that.
Yeah. But we, we get, because we don't have our own law enforcement, we have to then reach out to the sheriff and have what they are comfortable enforcing on our behalf. Which, I don't want to say creates a hurdle, but extends what we're trying to achieve.
I'll just have that understood, so...
And then you got, in a rural town like this, the whole fireworks issue can be quite for kind of explosive, but then you also got the person who likes to shoot their weapon all hours of the night, so that would be...
Six o'clock on Sunday morning should be off limits for all that.
Or around there, it'd be, or...
Or lawn mower. I mean, there's so many things that people, there are, it's whatever, what you may be considered bothersome, I may not, and vice versa. So that's really have to, it's, it has to be tied to a measurable element.
Right.
Because in towns, it's gotta get a hot sheriff, gotta come down, or a lawnmower kind of like that.
The poor sheriff.
Or by the time he gets here, the lawn's already cut, so...
When 9:00 PM rolls around, though, when 9:00 PM rolls around, people are starting to want to go to sleep, and sometimes...
Only those of us of a certain age.
Yes, well...
Just pass my bedtime.
It goes back to that same example of, you know, what bothers one person?
Right.
We had?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fine. Yeah, if you choose to contract with them, yes, that would be part of what we would talk about.
Then they're here next meeting, right?
Right.
So really, this was just to inform people that we, we said we would, we still are... So really, this was just to inform people that we said we would, we still are, it's just going to be a process.
And who will be forming those guidelines or suggestions? Which group will be doing that? The select women, or would it be, you know? It would really be collaborative. It would probably involve the planning board, the select board, and.
Potentially a consultant?
Yeah, potentially a consultant, because McCad will actually be here at the next meeting on September 2nd, so we'll be discussing, possibly engaging their services to rewrite our land use ordinance, site development review, and start us off on a revision of our comprehensive plan. And who is that? What would you say is that? The Midcoast Economic Development District. Really? They offer, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
And what do you anticipate your timeframe being?
That's it. This is almost a two-year process that we're trying to do. We've got, we need to get our comprehensive plan in place, we need to, knowing what our schedules traditionally are, where we vote on this at the town meeting, you know, the earliest, some of these are going to be voted on, be in the June meeting, but that then has to be almost completed by February to get into all of the pre-meeting status. So there's, it's, there's times that we have, we're working to get it done.
Okay, so some, there'll be some pieces in it ready to be voted on, maybe?
We hope.
Okay.
We have a consultant coming to the September 2nd meeting, McCad, who, we're going to talk about a consulting strategy with them and review to help with that.
There is a lot in this, I think it's going to take some time. It is better to do things slowly and right than fast and wrong. We want to make it as, as simple and as enforceable as possible. In reading this, my second thought was, this is going to take some time, so I hesitate to make promises, except that we are aware of it. Some of us have our own pet peeves and our local annoyances, and so we're really aware of the need. And this is going to be a hot button issue. It's going to take a lot of meetings with the town residents and in court, and by the time we get it on the ballot, I think, I'm thinking two years, to be honest with you.
Just, you know, some reserve, I do think what you're talking about, bringing a consultant in to possibly help with some of these, they're big, they're big issues, and the town is not a tiny little town anymore, it is growing. And so I think that's a step in the right direction, I really do. I think you have a lot of volunteers that do the very best they can. I think that would be encouraging to volunteers and employees to get this sort of guidance. Someone else has already plowed the field, hattled the field, let them tell you how to do it, so, good.
Mike Montgomery, so on the noise ordinance, is there a specific issue that's brought this to the attention of the town?
There's been a couple of issues, collecting, not, there's one over here, one over here. We're trying to manage it. It's, we're trying, there's, we're researching the best way to do it, and, you know, part of it is a time. The easiest piece certainly would be setting a time limit, a timeframe time limit, but there's other things that we want to do it the right way, that we can incorporate into it, so long as there's a way to enforce it and measure it.
And then we need buy-in from somebody who's going to help us enforce it. We can set all the rules we want, if there's no enforcer, it doesn't mean anything.
We know that.
It seems to me one of the more difficult things would just be defining what noise is.
It's all here.
Well, does that mention a crowing chicken?
Rooster?
Rooster?
No, but like.
Do you see what I mean?
No, what you would do, what you would do, you'd make, you'd make a comparison, so you'd find out what the decimal level was, and then you would make a comparison to.
Small, small, just annoying.
So then, then you would look at the schedule for threshold of hearing, and you would see what the permissible decimal level was. Would this be, would your local annoying rooster be making the noise, for instance, at a broadcast studio interior or rustling leaves? That's a tent, even. So, so there are, there are ways to measure and comparisons in the charts, really.
Yeah, I'm guessing a crowing rooster that wouldn't register on the decimal.
Oh, depends on where you're standing next to your rooster, and whether or not you're next to your bedroom window.
But it's aggravating, but it's aggravating.
Right, because there's actually three measurements, Mike. There's intensity, there's frequency, and there's duration. So it's the loudness, the pitch, or how long it lasts. Now, if something's crowing 12 hours a day, I have, it's probably going to be pretty annoying. So the three measurements is what you kind of look at to decide what kind of restrictions you want.
And we're going to have trouble enforcing the rooster ordinance, because if we start allowing voices at 6:00 in the summertime, that rooster's going to be in violation.
Well, then, all the noise.
Soup should scare it.
In some towns, towns let you have your backyard chickens, but not your backyard rooster.
Another thing to add to the mix, and if it's a two-year timeframe, maybe it'll correct itself all by itself, but it'd be the airboat score.
Oh, that's a hot button one.
That's also a time element. I mean, if you, it's tied to title, but it's also tied to time. If we said you can't have a noise X to Y, so it's.
It's also tied to.
It's a good one.
It's also tied to laws about people who make a living on the coast.
Right, and it has to be a balance, because it's important to consider economy, our economy. Oh, yeah, yeah, and are they in that occupation or Brunswick's war? I know there's been a lot of discussion, I've been reading about this in Brunswick. Yeah.
Questions of enforcement?
Yeah. Hi, Diane Walsh. I think two years is, if you get this done in two years, you're miracle workers, because it sounds more like a five-year project, but is there any other avenues that you've come across that would be something that's useful, that you could go a different way rather than a noise ordinance or anything? I don't, I haven't read any of the literature that you've read, but does anyone have any suggestions about another way of.
It's called enforcement?
Yeah, exactly, I, yeah, I'm saying.
You know, and that's, and we've spoken with them, the sheriff was here, you know, and I believe he spent some, doing some drive-bys at various times of the day to see if they could observe the recurrence of that, and, you know, it didn't happen at that time, so you know, trying to catch it in motion.
Well, that's the issue, is you call and then it's gone by the time someone gets here, but.
And he's heard that, he's trying.
I just want to know, are we barking up the right tree here, or is there another way to do something like this? Are there other laws that you can tag on to? I don't know. Where, I don't think this is really the only trick. Yeah.
I mean, we have an option of incorporating it into our existing ordinances, or we have a standalone ordinance.
Yeah.
So that's basically, yeah, that's, that's.
And maybe, you know, and with the consultant coming in, maybe they have.
Right, exactly.
I mean, there's, we have, this is a plan that we're pursuing. We're trying to resolve it.
Right. So many of these things could be avoided if we just all made better effort to be considerate and thoughtful and kind neighbors, whether it be cutting down trees and dumping trees down people's yards, crowing roosters, duck trucks.
Always have those.
And unfortunately, if we just look outside of ourselves, I think we could solve some of this.
Can I just remind everyone at the back that we are recording, so, thank you.
All right, let's move on to business item number four, 2021 land use amendments. The planning board presented seven ordinance changes for consideration at the 2021 end of town meeting budget meeting. The select board approved ordinance changes numbers one, three, and four. Ordinance change number one was Article 38 on the warrant. Ordinance change three was Article 40 on the warrant. Ordinance change four was Article 39 on the warrant. The town attorney approved language for the warrant on April 6, 2021, and the warrant became final. Although the correct ordinance changes were posted and made available for review to the voters, the language for Article 40, ordinance change three did not match. The question corresponded with ordinance change five, which was not approved by the select board.
So all of the information that went out to the voters, what they would have reviewed for the ordinance amendment would have been correct, but the corresponding question was actually the question that would have corresponded with ordinance change number five. So we should probably ratify this.
I agree, so I was involved in working with the planning board on this, and while the select board approved three items, one of the items was interchanged with a different ordinance, and, you know, it's, my position is that we, as a board, can't make a decision on behalf of the town, a town vote is what counts to me, so I think it's imperative, while it's not what the select board voted for, that we accept what the town voted for.
Well, the town did not vote for number five.
The town.
It was the question, but it's not what they wanted to have reviewed for language.
But what was on the, what was on the warrant is, is.
No, the question and the ordinance change were two different things, so one doesn't supersede the other.
What the town voted for, was it changing of the 12-day to 15-day, and that's what we need to allow for the town to have.
I hear what you're saying, but if they took a look at the ordinance change that was posted, that's not the language that they were reading.
But what they voted for on the warrant is what we need to move forward with.
They did not have the amended language for ordinance change number five, so they didn't actually vote for that.
The information that was on the warrant.
Do you understand what I'm going to say?
Both of the ordinance changes that you voted on, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. We can't, we have to follow what the town voted for, and perhaps we should make sure that.
And because it didn't match?
It didn't match.
So they didn't vote for either one?
Right, but, right, but we can't instill an ordinance if they didn't vote for, I think, is my point, we need to follow what the town voted for, whether we wanted that or not as a board, it's not up to us.
I think you're missing that ordinance change number five did not pass just because the question was on the ballot.
Right.
Both questions would have to be voted on.
It wasn't change five that made it, I have, I have all the information that we have.
I have all the information too, I think we're not communicating.
What?
If something could explain it in a different way, that would be.
So, the short of it is that both need to be revoted on, because the conflict negated both of it.
Right. So we can't, we can't put the ordinance, the ordinance that, we need to accept only what the town voted on.
We can't accept, we can't accept two different ordinances. So we didn't vote, people who read, who read the information packet voted to, to put what was in the information packet into law, so that if there is a conflict between those two, we need to have another vote.
Do you have a warrant, the ballot upstairs?
Can I have the ballot in your packet, Suzanne?
The ballot's right here.
But it doesn't match.
Because they all agree that they don't match. So that we need to have another.
We need to vote.
So the slip, we need to vote to include that on the warrant for the November election?
I think, I think we should.
Do it in November? I would actually advise, since everything got so complicated and hard to follow, and since we're trying to do things the right way and have some ordinances that are solid, why don't we wait until McCad completes the review and vote on the entire land use and site development review ordinance at one time? I mean, this, having ordinance changes every year has been very difficult to track and to amend the ordinances properly.
I actually disagree with that, I think we should, the select board approved three items, we reviewed the process, our planning boards spend hours coming up with the information, and I think we should, I have no problem having them go on the November warrant, ballot for people to vote on, some of these, we shouldn't wait until next year to approve, and some of these have already been approved by the board, so I remove that we continue to put these on the ballot.
We don't approve warrants, we recommend. We recommend or don't recommend their passage.
And we approved items that, for whatever reason, were overlooked in the preparation of the warrant.
If there was a mistake on the ballot or on the warrant, it needs to be done again, and we can't enforce the changes until they're legal.
I agree, and I think we should do it in November, I don't want to wait a year.
And I am concerned that we are headed back into COVID, and nobody agrees with me or wants to hear this, and we're going to be trying to hurry things again to get something done, and we might not even have a town meeting as we voted to have a town meeting. I'm forgetting what was the urgency, I, and I asked that question, I asked that question when we were discussing these, what is the urgency about getting all of this done?
One of the elements, which I think is something that the town needs to put into effect, is that any abutters should be notified from the town in a registered letter, which was a piece that actually fell off of the ballot for approval, and I think that is important and imperative that we protect the abutting neighbors of anything that happens in this town, and I don't want to wait until next June for that. That's my position.
Is there any reason why the town could not notify abutters of potential planning board actions?
No, it could just be our common practice.
It could become a common practice, so that that could happen.
Good, that's imperative that people are notified officially.
How would we make that common practice?
Make it a policy.
Make it a policy, it doesn't need to be incorporated into the ordinance.
Can we do that next meeting? For sometime in September?
Yeah, definitely.
So why don't we make the other element a policy, which is really extending applications from 12 to 15 days? That doesn't have to be an ordinance, but can be a policy, so that provides the planning board enough time to put it in the newspaper?
Well, I think the reason why we can't do that is because the ordinance language is specific, so we would actually have to vote on that.
As a town?
As a town.
So then, why, again, I think we should put that on the, on the November warrant, because these are things that are making better policy for the town, and I don't think waiting six more months or eight more months to do that is appropriate.
I think Suzanne has good points. I think that the minimum timeframe, what'd you say it was, seven or 10 days, and you wanted 14?
12 to 15.
And, and you proposed what?
15.
Well, if it's, if it is 12 to 15, it doesn't mean that you can't do it 20 days ahead.
We can't make them do it if it's any ordinance as 12. You can unenforce an ordinance.
Okay. There's a whole bunch of things they don't have the time to do it.
Is that the only one that would have to go on the November ballot?
I'm not opposed to looking at the other ones and putting other, I mean, there's, there were some word changes that weren't substantial changes in the ordinance, that I think we could maybe encourage us to review all of the, we had seven in total that were presented. I just think there's, there's certain things that I don't believe we should wait eight months to review. It's hard, some of these affect John as the code enforcement officer, allowing him to do things better, and that's really what we're trying to achieve as well.
Joan, which ones on these do you think really affect you and can't wait?
I don't have them in front of me, so.
And I didn't include all of the ordinance changes.
Do you, I mean, are you coming to the McCad meeting? I mean, these are things, I think we've asked the planning board to come to McCad as well, to talk about the process, so we could, I just think there's, there's some easy elements that would be beneficial to do sooner than later.
I just, my only concern is that I don't want to have a repeat of last year's board meetings, where the planning board changes dominated every single agenda. It doesn't serve the board. It doesn't serve the board, and it doesn't serve the town. And we ended up having confusion about which changes were proposed. The ordinance change numbers were changing. And we keep up with it as best as we can. But the process did not work this past year.
Not at all. So, well, we have the language written from the planning board. All of that work is done. You know, we could have a workshop with them collectively.
The deadline for the ballot would be September 3, just as a reminder, right?
My concern, again, is do we want to do things quickly or do we want to do them well? And we tried quickly, and it did not work well. So, slow down, do the best we can, and let's get the whole thing done in one fell swoop with the help of KED in a way that all of our ordinances work with our comprehensive plan.
Some of these should not wait two years.
Well, if you can convince me that the situation of any of these changes is such an emergency that lives are in danger or lawsuits are pending, then perhaps haste is necessary.
Lawsuits are pending, I know the one that John and I were talking about. You know, we need to make sure that we're doing things and wording things properly. There was a word that was left off, one word that was left off that can change how something's interpreted.
A comma can change how something's interpreted.
So I think some of these elements...
But they've been that way for a while, so I don't consider that an emergency. I do agree that the 12 to the 15 makes a lot of sense. And that would be an easy one.
As well as the even, I think we should put that, which we have. I think we should look at the language. We have a meeting on the 2nd. It's due tomorrow on the 3rd for the warrant. If we can get these out in advance, I mean, we talked about doing the 12 to 15. We could add that to the ballot.
I really think we need, I think it's putting too much, I think we have to make a decision tonight.
Okay, then I said you, let's put on the ballot.
Even the abutters, abut notification?
That can go on the ballot too, I'm fine with that.
No, it doesn't need to be, the abut notification can be done as a policy.
Okay, so we, okay, I just didn't know if that had gotten pushed back. Right, okay, so that, I think that's one of the...
Hold on, I need to make sure. I think it says it, I think it needs to be done as a...
Well, the ordinance change can state how everything's done, but you can still have a policy to double up the...
Not if it says in here that it's just sent via mail. That's what I think...
It just says how the applicant, it doesn't say what the town can do.
It doesn't say what the town can do. And the town can...
Well, I have no problem going through as a policy as long as it doesn't contradict the ordinance.
It doesn't. How it's redundant, but it doesn't contradict. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we know as a town that abutters have been noted.
Well, could you do the policy in the interim and tell you from the...
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we adopted the practice anyway, so that's how we're notifying people on the call.
I'm just concerned that we have a number of things that we've been talking about for months now. And more, more language from the planning board is going to take more time. That's not, means that we're not going to be dealing with the things that we need to be dealing with.
Well, I think if we're hired to consolidate, we have to do it for all of them.
Yes, I agree with you, Captain, that the whole thing needs to have, to have a good look. And everything needs to be done in concert with the new comprehensive plan.
So here's the one piece that I think that, why we should put this on the November. The cost of publication notification of a letter shall be borne by the applicant. The town should not be paying for this, and that's part of what this is.
But how many are we going to get, Suzanne, from November to June? That's really going to...
That is subdivisions, right?
It's any abut notification. Part of, what it fell under the subdivision, there's different places it falls within the ordinance. So it's, it's part of anything that, anything that a letter is notified for should be done from the town, certified mail, and paid by the applicant. And that's what's in here. And that's what actually the select board approved to move forward with. I have no problem resubmitting that in the November ballot and going that the right way so that not only is it done, but the letters pay for it. The town should be doing it, but the letters should be paying for it. And it becomes, it gets added to their application when they come in, at the time it's done.
That's not the only one that wasn't approved, was the timeline.
Right, but this didn't make it to vote, that's the problem.
It didn't make it at all.
That's what fell off for the timeline. So this was approved, but didn't make it to the ballot. This should go back on the ballot as well as the 15-day one.
This is way too much of a mess.
The entire ordinance needs to be looked at because there's going to be changes on the changes that we've been making. I'm confident of that. And we should take the time to go through the entire ordinance, have everybody, all town officials, understand the changes that we're proposing before we propose it to the town to vote on in its entirety. Then we have a fresh, clean ordinance that's enforceable and covers all of the issues that we're trying to enforce.
And in the meantime, I think that we can probably use monies that have already been assessed, appraised, and appropriated to support the post it necessary for abutters, wouldn't you think?
That's actually contradictory to what you said in a previous comment. Now, I mean, you thought that the town shouldn't bear some of the cost for certain things, that's, we either do it for all or not.
I don't think that the town should ultimately do that.
Then I think, then we should do it for two years, then.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm sorry?
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is not.
Suzanne moved for ordinance change to be placed on the warrant. And nobody seconded it.
I just feel like, right now, we have created such a mess. I don't know if, who's on first? Who's on second? Did we make it to?
Okay, but I guess I'm concerned how it happened also. I mean, how did the select board approve something and then the warrant change? Or the ballot change? That actually concerns me as well.
You approved the warrant at the meeting.
We actually called, we called it out at the meeting and said, this is not, and it's recorded. But let me finish. We said, this is not what the select board approved, and he said, that's what we're going with, and it was recorded. So that is not an answer.
It must have been after the warrant was approved.
Right, but then I didn't, I didn't, we approved the warrant, and I didn't see the ballot. Because the ballot was incorrect based upon what we had approved as...
The warrant is always in your packet when you approve the warrant.
The ballot, I'm sorry, I misused the word.
The ballot is the warrant.
We saw the ballot.
Right, and the actual ballot ballot...
Are you talking about the wording that goes on?
Yes.
That was sent directly from the planning board.
The warrant is exactly the same as the ballot.
When we had the informational meeting, and I noticed that it was the wrong ordinance.
When was the informational meeting?
Was after.
One week before the election.
All right.
That was after the warrant was approved.
So the question is, how does it happen?
How do we move forward? We can discuss this at another time. What are we doing with business item number four?
We, it died for a while a second. So we're going to leave the warrant as is.
It's not doing with the town, will you like? Okay.
All right, business item number five. Planning board stipends. The town approved 3,000 for stipends for planning board members for FY 2021, 2022. The intent was to pay $50 per meeting attended to the chair and $25 per meeting attended to other regular members per meeting attended. During discussing at the budget advisory committee meeting, there was a general agreement that board members would only be compensated for attendance at planning board meetings. No vote was taken by the select board. A vote should be taken to direct the treasurer on appropriate disbursement of funds.
I move that the treasurer be authorized to pay members of the planning board stipends amounting to $50 per meeting for the chair and $25 per meeting attended to other regular members per meeting attended.
Can we clarify what those meetings are?
Regular board meetings.
And workshops.
Yeah, planning board meetings and workshops.
So you, I think you should call it "and workshops", and if we, like, when we request the planning board to come to the KED meeting, so then why would they come?
They'd be invited.
Right. That's what was suggested at the budget committee.
I think any meeting that we request their presence at...
Do we have a conversation meeting?
As far as I recall, it was just for regular meetings, the regular meeting and the workshops.
We have a limit of $3,000. If we request them to continually come to meetings, and in particular, the planning board chair comes frequently, I don't, I...
Well, I think it's also, this is my opinion, not the budget, but it's my opinion. We are volunteers, and we evolve volunteer time, go to meetings. I don't think it's asking too much of somebody to come to meetings. And they volunteer meetings before those pay, I don't see the problem.
They put a substantial amount of time into our community, and I...
Many board members, too.
So I think we need to have a motion that it needs to be amended, and we amended because this gets messy.
What was the board going to tell me?
When the treasurer's reading.
It wasn't classified as to what meetings it was.
That was $3,000 for stipends, is it?
So, the motion to continue per meeting attended, these meetings would include workshops called by the board.
Could you restate your motion?
I move that the treasurer be authorized to disburse funds at the rate of $50 per meeting attended to the chair and $25 per meeting attended to other regular members for attendance at regular monthly planning board meetings and for workshops required to accomplish their job.
I second that motion. Yes, Mike?
I have a question. Do the members of the planning board meeting, of the planning board accomplish their job at the meeting? Or do they accomplish their job at home and get all the information together and then bring it into the meeting and present it?
Both.
The meeting, you may do information gathering outside, but the business of the planning board has to be conducted at a public meeting.
Right.
But they also come and meet with people at the town hall.
And I would say, how many times, right, how many times does the budget committee do that? How many times does the library committee do that? So do we want to get into all these positions having stipends?
I know that it was our, as a member of the budget advisory committee, it was our intention to provide these stipends at regular planned planning board meetings, not for anything else that wasn't even discussed, that didn't even come up, that I voted on.
Then workshops.
Workshops.
Right, workshops, but that was it, not for anything else. So I know as a member of the budget advisory committee, that was the intention, if they wanted to propose something for a change, that to go ahead and go through the process again. But that was my understanding at that time, that was what I voted on. They want to change that by all means?
We can evaluate what it looks like this year. This is the first year we've had it here in the 18th.
That's what we said at our meeting. Our recommendation was to try it for a year, see how it worked out. That's what we decided to vote on, and that's what we voted on.
Mike, could you give us a moment?
Yeah, I guess a comment. I guess. I'm not as familiar with the issue, obviously, as everyone else is, but just viewing the issue from the outside without all the information that you folks had, I think if we get into the habit of paying volunteers, then when is it going to stop? So these people all on the planning board or any other board volunteered. And now, if I'm going to pay a volunteer a stipend, which is fine, but they're still a volunteer. And the comment was made, if we call a meeting, we expect you to be there because we're paying the stipend. They're volunteers. So I got involved years ago with not being able to depend on volunteers in another project I was working on. I had to tell myself, hey, wait a minute, they're volunteers. I'm happy if they do anything for me. So are these people volunteers or are they paid employees? And you treat a paid employee differently than you treat a volunteer, and your expectations are different from volunteers than paid employees. And I, I feel uncomfortable starting a precedent of paying a volunteer.
They were paid years ago.
I don't care. I don't care that they were paid years ago.
A motion on the floor. Do you want to, whatever you're going to have, one more time?
So, and we'll move to authorize the treasurer to disburse funds at a rate of $50 per meeting for the chair and $25 per meeting to regular planning board members for regular meetings and workshops conducted by the planning board.
Correct. All in favor? All opposed? It carries. Article number six. Over the hill ATV riders trail access. The club would like permission to use Town Road lane at Littlefield School. There will be no parking on Town Lane. Permission to egress or ingress. We used to use the lot for access to the Old Town Road that is located just in the back of the lot traveling into Joyce Pie Living Trust. We will only be using the parking lot for trail maintenance if allowed. The purpose of the request is mainly for use during an upcoming event. However, the trail overall requires maintenance and upkeep. Thank you for your consideration, Matt, CEO, president, trail master. This is House Law, map 58 on Tax Map, R6.
So this is the lot where the Littlefield School is. So the ATV club and I reached out to the historical society just to make sure that they are on board with that. And they are completely fine with it as long as the ATV club lets them know of events, which the club agreed to.
When is the Littlefield School, but they're talking about the meeting house?
Meeting house.
So it's the meeting house that's not in Littlefield, sorry. Okay, that's all right. They're looking for access to the Old Town Road.
They're looking for permission from the selectmen to use the property behind the meeting house for events.
For events.
The land.
So for events.
Special rides, because they have free rides.
So it's not a...
It's not a common trail, it's something that they just use when they have...
They won't park.
Okay. No, they won't be parking, they always park at the firehouse.
Yeah.
So there's a letter of support from the historical society?
I agree, but we allow them access for us.
They've been very responsible, I think.
They're very, very responsible.
I second the motion. Any more questions? All in favor? Town administrators report.
Notice in your packet that there's a copy of the fire tract bid, so that has gone out. We've also gone out to bid for winter sand, and it is due September 2nd. We've also gone out to bid for winter sand, and we did so due September 2nd. On September 16th, we will be, some of us will be attending a seminar that Jensen Verity is hosting in South Portland. I assign Madeline Cathy up. Do you want to go, Suzanne?
September, isn't that our meeting?
That's our meeting night, but we were going to attend the seminar in lieu of the meeting and then reschedule our meeting.
What is it again? The, say the.
It's the Jensen Verity Seminar. The information was in last time's packet.
Sally's Law Firm.
Yep.
Okay, I'll go. Okay, I'll sign you up. So would you like to have your meeting on September 23rd instead?
That's fine with me.
The 23rd would work for me.
Yeah, that works. My first parent's weekend, so the following weekend.
Oh, boy, that's exciting. That's all I have to.
Future agenda items. Next week will be Maquette. Is there anything you would like on the agenda for next week in addition to meeting with them or on that week for the next meeting?
Can we get some status updates, like on the vote removal, some of the things on?
The certified letters have gone out for the vote removal. They have until September 3rd to act. If they do not act, then we were directed to contact Bureau of Parks and Lands. And once that department is informed, they would have 15 days to remove the votes.
And if they don't?
Well, I think the state would do it.
Okay.
And they do it if anyone expects.
September 3rd.
Is it for both locations or just for one?
Just the one location because the other vote has already been removed.
And the camper?
The camper is a little more awkward. I was actually going to, going to the camper the other day to get VIN number and other pertinent information to inform the Bureau of Motor Vehicles that there was an abandoned vehicle, which the Bureau would take care of. And I didn't understand the condition of the camper, and I was advised not to go in.
Isn't the VIN, is the VIN up on the license plate, like on the window like it used to be?
I'm not sure, but I'll take somebody with me and get the information, and then I'll inform the Bureau.
I'll bring my sidearm.
Okay. I understand there were rats in there.
I have my concealed weapons permit.
I have a transfer station.
I gotta live somewhere too.
The Bureau said they wouldn't go in the camper, so.
So that one's to be continued.
So I think we open the door, put a bomb in, not a bomb bomb, but like those thing, and they'll run out, and then we can go in.
Yeah.
Full masks.
Play more mind.
Quick question for the Maquette presentation next week.
Yes.
Are they going to give an outline on how they're going to review the ordinances as well as accompaniment? Have they had a chance to look at them so far?
No, they haven't looked at them yet because they haven't been engaged yet.
They're reviewing their proposal at last.
But, so what are they, what are they doing next week?
They're going to explain how their services work so that the board understands and that we're all in agreement on how we move forward.
And the planning board had a lot of questions that we can't answer, so we thought it would be good if they were here to hear how they would interact.
So this next meeting, will that be at the fire station in the former store? That's my suggestion.
We should. It's a little crowded when we have people.
But you don't have all of the ambiance here.
Well, we could bring them a school sign.
Our masks. You need some bigger masks. That was an issue with planning board meeting last week.
Any other comments?
I move to be adjourned.
I'm in favor.
Should I have your popcorn for this one?
Yes.